Good evening. My name is Dean Kilburg, third word Alderman, and I'll be chairing this evening's committee of the whole meeting. This is Monday, July 10th, 2017. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Hall for tonight's meeting. Let the record show that Alderman Marx and Radecki are absent this evening. Everyone else is in attendance. Do we have any special items or presentations this evening? Anything other than the one scheduled under 2A, which would be a police department presentation? This evening, we have the pleasure to have with us Officer Russo. And welcome to City Hall. And we look forward to hearing what you have to share with us tonight.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay.
Just a little.
Yeah.
There you go. Great. Thank you.
Well, I'm Officer Mark Russo with the Geneva Police Department. I am the Mental Health Liaison Officer for the Police Department, a new title for me that I gladly accepted from the Chief and Commander Nash just recently. I'm also one of the Crisis Intervention Team Officers, as you see all around you, probably wondering what that means. So, we're going to get into that. Again, it's Crisis Intervention Team, and what that means, the training that we went through, is a team of law enforcement officers which has received intensive specialized training on dealing with individuals in the community with mental illness or a physical disability. What we do is we provide immediate responses to calls involving somebody with a mental illness or in a crisis situation. And I think, we look at the news, we see that pretty readily throughout all communities. And we're not immune to that here in Geneva as well. The goal of the program is that to have one Crisis Intervention Team Officer available on each shift. So, your morning, afternoon, and midnight shift. Currently, the Geneva Police Department has eight officers that are Crisis Intervention Team Officers. And we do have coverage for our shifts. So, we are also in the process of trying to get more officers. There is a waiting list. Again, back to, you look around, there's a big need for it nationally. So, the class slots fill up pretty quickly. All right. Now, the question is, how would you identify a Crisis Intervention Team Officer? As you see up on the board there, that pin, we have on our uniforms. The Chief specifically said this year, when I got the title, that we needed to go ahead and put those on. And all members who are Crisis Intervention Team Officers at our Police Department are wearing them now. So, it's a very helpful thing, especially in the community, because with other organizations, NAMI being the number one, National Alliance on Mental Illness, is specifically telling patients or people that they service and help to ask an officer that, "Look for that pin." And so, it is a good indicator for somebody, especially who's in the middle of dealing with a crisis. So, if you see that, that's what it means. So, again, it's that recognition out there, especially for the community as well. All right. Some of the things that CIT is also wanting to push for and goals going forward is, it's not just on a reactive basis, all right? So, because a lot of police work is a reactive job. We're called to service for various things. Accidents, could be fraud reports, you name it. Well, in this capacity, what would be nice is, because again, we get called for people who are in crisis, and we make contact with them, we get them the services that they need, if it's a transport to the hospital, whatever it may be. Could be just a referral for counseling services. But, what we now have is, we now have a contact with somebody who we know at one point in time was in crisis. So, it affords us another opportunity to use that to be proactive and kind of do a well-being check going forward in the future. So, that is one of the big goals also that CIT is trying to maintain and foster going forward, and especially to help community relations. All right. Another thing that is a big part of it is building up our, with the community, and partnering with other places that provide service for people in mental health crisis, or suffering from various things, whether it could be marital issues, could be problems with the kids. So, whether we partner with Tri-City Family Services, Eckers Center, AID, Association for Individual Development, I'm very big on, I said NAMI earlier, which I worked with them in the past, and I refer just about everybody, because not only one person's affected when somebody's in crisis, because the family is affected as well. And they're very big about having family members as an active role in the person's wellness, and just constantly remind a person, "You are not alone." We have, and actually, I worked with NAMI Dupage in the past, they now have NAMI Kendall Kane as well. So, I actually met the representative here a couple weeks ago, when I met with the Mental Health Board. So, that's a definite relationship that I'm looking to foster for us going forward as the Mental Health Liaison. All right. A little bit about me, because you're probably wondering, why did you get the position as the Mental Health Liaison and a CIT Officer? I got my Bachelor's of Psychology, I'm a Bachelor's of Science in Psychology from Olivet Nazarene University. And when I finished that degree up, I started by tutoring autistic children. I went from there, and I got a job at Shapiro Center, if anybody is familiar with Kenkeke State Hospital. Does anybody recognize that? That's what it used to be called. And actually, that's, was a state-run facility, still open, because many have closed. The census is way down, but I worked there, and I got the majority of my training where I saw firsthand, mental illness on display on a daily basis, and in a severe capacity. They deal with, they have dual diagnosis patients there, and there's people who are there from, you know, chemical dependency or substance abuse, and how that affected them, and they ended up becoming schizophrenic as a result of it. I dealt very closely with autism in the severest form in a dual diagnosis population, saw things that are not actually mental illness, but results of psychotropic medication issues or medical conditions that affect people. And that is a great thing to know, because sometimes, things might look like somebody is having a breakdown, but really, it's related to their medicine. So, I took that experience, and eventually went to Lyndon Oaks Hospital, and I worked there on an outpatient basis. And that also gave me another side of the coin, because at Shapiro, that was long-term. There was, the patients there were pretty much going to stay there until, I mean, hopefully, they've got discharged and went back out into the community, or unfortunately, they died. So, that was a long-term. Lyndon Oaks, short-term. Short-term in a beautiful community of Naperville, just like Geneva is. And I saw there, plenty of people come in for short-term care, and during those stints, you saw how mental illness plays a life, plays a role in anybody's life. It doesn't matter whether you are rich or poor, doesn't matter what your ethnicity is, it affects anybody, it does not discriminate. And to see the other side of the coin, where these are people who are doctors, lawyers, and suffering, you know, having a breakdown, got that on display, and some of the similar stuff that I dealt with at Shapiro, because they're on medicine as well, and the effects that that plays. I also got to expand the population I dealt with, because Shapiro was mainly adults. Well, now I saw children, adolescents, saw geriatrics, and just saw the whole, you know, the whole panorama of how mental illness affects people. So, with all that experience, that is the populations that Crisis Intervention Team Officers are asked to deal with. And that's one of the things that we have to deal with, because, back to police work, and it being mostly reactive, we don't have a choice on who we're going to come across on the street on any given day, at any given time. So, all populations count just the same. And we want to service those people, and give them the best possible service, and the better, most, best outcome we can. So, that, with that being said, the benefits of this program, if you're wondering, would be, got an immediate response from the police, and somebody who's now been trained in this rather big, big book of a 40-hour class, but I would say, some would say, in other classes they've been to, that it's just a big bunch of papers, we're killing trees. I don't feel that way one bit. That book has a lot of valuable information, and is very helpful, and it's helped me and my fellow officers, and the other officers that are now trained in this. So, with that, you have better training. You have better training on de-escalation techniques, because if you think that you, when you encounter somebody who's in a mental crisis, you know, and you're going to have a louder voice, that's probably going to be a technique that's going to, you know, aggravate the situation, and now we're looking at, we have to put our hands on and escalate force when it may not be necessary. So, that is one of the main things that is a big part of CIT, is about knowing what we can do, how we position ourselves, so we are in a better position, too, so we don't have to yell, or have to get into a situation that's going to escalate the force. And it is very effective. The other thing that, when we talk about this, that not a lot of people realize is, when you deal with somebody, for instance, autism, it's a, it deals with a lot of social anxiety. They really don't want to see you or I sometimes, okay? They don't, and if they're very severe, they're probably not going to look you in the eye, and it's nothing personal, but they're just not wanting, you know, they're already unnoticed, overstimulated by your presence. So, where you position yourself, and actually, probably standing away from them, is probably better, because they'll be easier to talk to. And I know firsthand on how that, on how that goes with the various populations I've served in that. And so, it is very important, and it's very important for any given law enforcement officer to know that, and even the community, because this is an education tool for all of us, because we know that there are people that are autistic, that are walking around our very streets today. There are people that are schizophrenic, there are people that suffer from bipolar disorder. So, the other important thing is, is our tone of voice, voice tone. Voice tone, we are very big about being trained on how, when we talk, we've got to talk slower. And because if you stack questions on somebody who's mentally ill, you're probably going to have a very poor conversation, and it may cause things to escalate. As a result, though, of the many things that have happened with this movement, there has been a decrease, even though it might not seem like it in the news media, but of people, of officers having to escalate force, of, you know, lethal force encounters, because this is very helpful. It's very helpful for us, it's very helpful for you. So, that's pretty much the gist of the presentation that I wanted to give to you. If you have any questions, I'm here for you.
Officer Russo, thank you for your service and your willingness to commit to working with, with this area of police enforcement, and it's an important area. Do we have questions from the council? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you for your presentation, Officer Russo. How many, how many certified or Crisis Intervention Team members do we have on our police force now?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight of them.
So, we have them on every shift?
We do, we do. And we're planning to get more, as Commander Nash has told me, so, yes, yes, we do.
Did you want to?
It's a, it's a very hard class to get into, as he stated before. Literally, the day-
Can you come up to the microphone? Sorry.
I want to take away from Officer Russo. The day the class becomes available online, literally, we went online, within 10 minutes it was filled, and they had 45 people waiting on a waitlist. So, it's, this is actually, fortunately, because it's such an important topic, this is actually not a money issue. I'm just happy to come up here and say, "We don't have a money issue here." The issue is, there are not enough classes out there. And, excuse me, ideally, we would like to send every officer to this, because we think, as he expressed, and you guys have no idea how, you could be here for two hours, he would talk to you about this topic, he's so passionate about it.
I think I hit, getting my time down pretty good.
But it's such, it's such an important topic, and if we could have every officer trained in this, for all the reasons he expressed, it would be a benefit to the city, it would be a benefit to everybody nationally with the problem that it is. But unfortunately, with this, it's not, like I said, it's not a money issue, reference to the class, it is literally, there are not enough classes out there. So, as soon as we can get people to it, we're going to get people to it. Ideally, the Chief has made this a priority, and we've, basically, with his help, and Sergeant Frieders, they'll be putting together policy, and, you know, basically forming the team, and we'll put this into practice, and it'll be even better than it already is.
Great. Thanks. And so, do, when, when there's a call to some disturbance or some event, does this manifest itself where you realize that this has escalated, or evolved such that we need someone that's CIT?
Yes, yes. And that's, and that's what the whole intention of the program is, and actually, when, at the start of the program, because again, this is, I mean, it's not the newest of things, but it is a newer thing, because I don't think before today, had any of you heard of this? I mean, how long ago did you hear about it? Not very long. Okay. That's, that's so. But, it was, in its early times, viewed as, if you got somebody from, in the Tri-Cities area, that we would have somebody to go and assist, if it was St. Charles, Batavia, you know, and, you know, so on and so forth, Elburn. But, and we have been fortunate, because there's a lot of Batavia officers that are, that are trained in it as well. Say, if we had a situation where we didn't have an officer, I mean, and it had evolved to that, we have some coverage from our other, you know, neighboring towns. But, yes, when it reaches to that point, to have a CIT-trained officer there, it is very much desired, because the training that you do go through, I mean, unless you do have, I mean, I can say wholeheartedly with my background, not everybody has as much psychology training, that, you know, that's what I'm passionate about, that's what I got my degree in. So, for other people that, you know, haven't gone through that much training, it really is a lot of new material to a point, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Billy Alderman. Ruby?
Hi, thank you. You mentioned towards the beginning that you might be able to have follow-up with-
Yes.
People, so I'm just curious if that criteria, or any type of schedule, has been established, or is that just a future goal?
It would be, I mean, I've already started doing some follow-ups, or with Sergeant Frieders, especially when there's encounters that have, you know, or cases that have come up, he would, you know, send me the sheet and the person to contact, and so, I've gone and had that follow-up already. And also, just from a, I mean, I can definitely tell you from already other, you know, encounters with people that I know in our community, that I, that a police report was generated from, or that I had contact with, that I've always made a point to go up to them, and just, just to have general conversation. Because, again, the overall goal here is, we don't want it to be at a crisis point, because, you know, somebody in recovery, well, what does that look like? And if they're able to talk to me on a normal basis, and it's great, you know, I mean, that is the other part, that's the beauty of this, and as a police officer, is I get a chance to talk to, you know, pretty much anybody. The question is, are they going to talk back? And how nicely? So.
So, it's kind of like a well-being check, the follow-up?
It can be, it's, I would say, that in particular, when you have it more down of, like, so, we dealt with somebody, say that, in this case, say it was somebody who was suicidal.
Okay.
Okay? Yes, so it could be on that, where we would actually go and, you know, say, "This week, I want to go and talk to Samantha Jones."
Okay.
So, so, yes, that would be, that is, that is a goal of where we want to take things forward, just to, again, it's, you know, it can be a more rewarding part of the job, and also, it helps the community.
Sure. And is this mostly short-term then, or do you envision any long-term follow-up? I mean, obviously-
Well, I would say, for the remainder of my career that I'm here, we'd hope that, and I would say that just as, because I look at things, again, I don't, one of the things that was talked about when I worked at Lyndon Oaks, was for people who were patients there, is that they felt that the communication was lacking, that basically, they went there, and, you know, the doctor would come in, he'd write them some prescriptions, and they would get no information how they're doing, you know, what they're doing, and then eventually they'd be discharged. Well, shortly thereafter, they were back, a couple weeks later. So, I would, I'm going to say, from my perspective, and how I look at things, is that I know I'm going to come into contact with somebody, so I might as well just make that, you know, put that effort forward ahead of time, barring that I have the time to do that.
Sure.
So, so, that's, that's the way I look at it, because, I mean, I plan on, you know, serving, I've been here just under nine years, so, I plan on giving you, you know, quite a few more years, so, that would be my plan until the day I retire.
Okay, great. And just a couple more questions. I'm curious with the state of Illinois on the PIN, is this, is this training different in different states? Do you know?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
That, that is something that I would be curious of, I mean, but I can only imagine in, you know, I mean, let's face it, there, you know, with the state of how, of affairs in Illinois, and how they view mental health, I mean, it is pretty interesting that that's on there, because there's plenty of states ahead of us in mental health, but I would still say that they would be putting monies towards this, because of its, I mean, again, nobody wants to continually be settling lawsuits for-
Sure. All right, and then, my last question for you. I think this is all fantastic, and I'm really happy to hear that we're taking part of the program. I'm just curious, and I don't know if you want to answer, even try to answer this right now, because it's a really big question, what sort of preventative measures, what ideas do you have that we could take, you know, to prevent these crises from even occurring, rather than just reacting to the crises, you know, after the fact?
Well, I think a lot of stuff, I had mentioned the National Alliance on Mental Illness. I think a lot of things start at home. I think that right there, we have to let people know, because, let's face it, are the police your first call? I mean, I don't know if we're on your speed dial for like, you know, in your top five of places you want to call, because it's probably not going to be that. But, and the other part of, I mean, I've been working in mental health now for pretty much half of my life. Some people don't want to, don't want to admit that they have a problem.
Sure.
So, I would say, especially reaching out to families that they know, that you may know who are struggling, is plant that seed, get them literature, encourage them to let them know they're not alone, that they're not alone in it, the, you know, the community stands behind them. Because I think that way, you're going to have a lot more ability to get people who are, you know, are ashamed, are scared, are, you know, and when, maybe the people that are, the smaller percentage that are very difficult, and, you know, again, I've been working in this for quite a while, in my personal life, I have plenty of loved ones who suffer from mental illness. And it's, it's a very hard road to travel when you have somebody who's treatment-resistant, to put, you know, and that can be medical, you know, and psychiatric. So, to constantly put out a message of, "You're not alone, we care about you, we care about you," it's not in vain. So, I think that that's something that has, that would be how I would answer your question, and, which spawns more answers, though. But, at the same time, it's a, it's a very strong starting point, I think.
Great. Thank you.
Mary Burns?
Officer Russo, thank you very much. About, oh, I got a question for you. I was trying to collect my thoughts here. I want to say it was about two months or so ago, a state law was passed, Secretary of State issues cards now, if drivers want them. And that card identifies me as a driver of having a, autism, or some physical disability, so that when I am pulled over, I hand you my license and that card that identifies me of having a condition. Have you seen these cards regularly on your beat, or perhaps your colleagues?
You know, I have not, and I found out about that at the Mental Health Board meeting, which was, which I thought was a very, very useful tool, tool as well, because especially, again, I referenced autism, and that's, again, that's a very big one, and, you know, there's plenty of wonderful, you know, productive people that are autistic, and they're, they could drive a car, you know, some might feel, not feel that way, but it, it's just, you know, when it's used that way, as that indicator, it's a helpful thing. I have not seen them, anybody?
I know, I believe it was started by a mom in Oswego. It was ushered originally through the Aurora Police Department.
Okay.
Our friends, your friends in Naperville, that entire police department has been trained by an organization in Naperville that works with autistic children and adults. But, I think to Alderman Ruby's question, the state of Illinois provides the training under DHS, or under, do you know?
I don't, no, that I, that I don't know, but I would imagine that, I would say DHS would be a wonderful resource, because I-
So, who certifies yours training, then? Last question, Alderman Bruno kind of referenced it. You respond to a, or prior to responding to any incident, does dispatch know based on information gathered, respond please, send a CIT, or is that determined after the response is in action?
Now, I mean, depending on, especially, the nature of it, I mean, some of the information we're going to get at me, especially if it's somebody, if it's a call for a psyche valve, it's going to be, you know, I mean, but, no, not all the, I mean, the answer's going to be that, not all the time.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Your work is important. I'll echo what the chairman said.
I hope I didn't screw this up too bad.
I'm waiting for the chairman's comments.
I, just so people understand the scope of your support, I think you're there to assess and determine the individual, if they're at risk themselves, at risk to their families, and at risk to society.
Yes.
And I think the fourth point would be then, that you're there to provide support, and to refer them to maybe professionals that could, could provide more support for their specific need. Is that, does that pretty well summarize it? You're not a therapist, you're not a psychologist, you're there to understand the situation, make an assessment as relates to safety and well-being, and then provide resources or referrals to the individual involved.
That is correct. We're of the conduit to get them to the necessary services, hopefully, I mean, if it's a situation where they don't need to go to the hospital on a voluntary or an involuntary basis, like anything, when, when you see a need, hopefully, they'll follow up on that. When, I've given out countless things, countless services for Tri-City, I've also done it for, again, for NAMI, just attending meetings, because mental health, I mean, it's a, it's a day-by-day thing. And I look at it, because it's kind of like the thing for people that go to Alcoholics Anonymous, you go to your meetings, you go to your meetings, so.
To follow up on the mayor's point, would it be possible to provide to the city to put in our newsletter information as relates to the specific topic that he was talking about? In other words, if you, if have somebody with some, some type of a challenge in the family, how could they secure one of these cards? And do they go through the Driver's License Bureau? Is that where, and do you need a, do you need a doctor's, a diagnosis to take with you? Okay.
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
All forward information-
Yeah, that would be great, absolutely. I, I would say that that would be a big help, because again, in this model, we're working with the community, and vice versa. So, if everybody works together, we have a happier community.
Officer Russo, thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate everything that you're doing, and implementing, and launching this CIT program here in Geneva, and we'll look forward to hearing more about it at maybe some point in time in the future.
Great. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Item three on the agenda is to approve committee of the whole minutes from June 26, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Burkhardt. Voice vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. Item A on the agenda this evening is recommend approval of Chamber of Commerce Class E, E6, a special event liquor license for Festival of the Vine, September 8 through the 10th, 2017, here in Geneva. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Cummings, seconded by Swanson. If not, a voice vote should be sufficient. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item B, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of updated and amended intergovernmental agreement for Tri-City ambulance. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by McGowan, seconded by Ruby. Discussion. Are there any questions? This program has been in place since 1982. It's served the community well, it's really served the Tri-Cities well. I think that we'll take a roll call on this.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item C, recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of one Ford F-350 Crew Cab four-by-four pickup truck from Bob, writings fleet sales in the amount not to exceed $38,000. So moved. Motion to approve? Burkhardt?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno. Discussion, any questions? All the information on this is in our board packet. Would you please read the roll?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Carries. Unanimous. Item D, recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award in contract with Strata Construction Company in the amount not to exceed $40,083 for 2017 sidewalk and curb maintenance project. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Burkhardt. Any discussion on this? If not, I take, we're prepared, I'm sorry, was there a question? I'm sorry.
Good question.
Alderman, McGowan?
Thank you. I was just curious why some of the bids are so much more expensive, and why some of the costs were almost double. What is it that those companies are providing, or why the value is so much higher?
Mr. Bebba, please.
We see this as a fairly common experience when we're bidding out projects. In some instances, the contractors are already booked solid, but they're going to throw a bid in just to keep their name on our bid list, or in other circumstances, they may be anticipating that there will be, due to a lack of competition, there may be an opportunity to enhance their profit margins.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part, to do what to their competition, to what?
In some instances with contracts, if there is not enough competition, you'll see them actually turn in a higher bid number to enhance their profit margins. Because if you look at it, due to prevailing wage, labor is a set cost, the materials are a set cost. There are some factors that may come into play, that they may have preferred contracts with local distributors of materials to get their concrete at a lower price due to a bulk purchasing agreement, or, but typically, the primary factor is, is that if the contractors already have a significant amount of work, that they're just trying to stay on the city's bid program, bid list. So, they'll shoot us a number, and if they get the contract at a higher price, great for them. If they don't, they just stay, still stay in the system.
Okay, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that it didn't have anything to do with the fact that they have superior curb materials, and then, and we're not getting that, but it doesn't sound like that's the case. It's more of like a strategic move to have, to come in at such a high bid.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item F, this is recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of 2017 John Deere front end loader in the amount not to exceed $175,822.17 from National Joint Powers Alliance and declared 2003 John Deere front end loader as surplus trade-in. I believe that's in the amount of $42,000. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Ruby?
Second.
Seconded by Burkhardt. Is there questions as it relates to this purchase? This will be used at the waste treatment facility, correct? Okay. Okay. Please read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item G, recommend draft ordinance amending title 11 zoning related to accessory buildings and uses, permitted uses landscaping and design, tree preservation, design and maintenance, and regulations for sign type. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Ruby. Discussion. We have with us Mr. DeGroot this evening to give us an overview of what's involved here with some of these changes.
Yes, thank you.
Has this been through the Plan Commission, and-
It has, and it comes to you tonight with a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. As we work with the zoning ordinance on a daily basis, we come across what I would call the need for housekeeping-type text amendments. These are typos, areas that just could use a little clarification, or just kind of general updates to some of the requirements that don't meet our current practices. So, that's what's included in your packet tonight. I know there's a lot of pages there, but that's because we had to delete entire sections and renumber them, not because the amendments were that detailed. I'm happy to walk through kind of and hit the highlights of the six major text amendments, if that be desired.
Let's do it.
Please.
Okay, the first one is to Section 11, 3-3, accessory buildings and uses. This section does not clearly state that a deck or a patio that's budding or attached to the principal structure is allowed to encroach into a required rear yard. So, for example, if the house is required to be set back 30 feet from the back lot line, so too with the deck or patio. But our code does clearly state that if it's a detached deck, say around a pool or patio, like around a fire pit, that's not attached to the house, it can be within five feet of the rear yard lot line or side yard lot line. We think a practical application, and what has been done consistently for many, many years, has been to treat them both the same, that if it's in the rear yard, it can be within five feet, whether it's attached to the house or detached from the house. So, this amendment would just clarify that, that we've been treating them both the same since 1995 when the zoning ordinance was adopted. I think that was the practical intent, and I don't know why the distinction isn't made in the quote.
Any questions on number one?
Okay. The second amendment is to Section 11, 5G-2, the list of permitted uses in the R5 low-density two- and three-family residential district. As the name implies, the zoning district is intended to allow for two-family dwelling units, as well as single-family and three-family. For whatever reason, two-dwelling units were not listed in, under permitted uses in the R5 two-family and three-family district. So, we're just looking to clarify that discrepancy.
Any questions on two? Three?
The third is kind of a series of amendments to Chapter 10, which is our landscaping and design regulations. In this section, there's a number of detailed application requirements, like the number of copies we require, the size of those copies, the scale of those plans, that is spelled out in the code. We really don't feel a need to have that kind of stuff codified. Those application requirements change kind of routinely. For example, the code currently says we need 40 copies, hard copies, full-size. We don't require that, that's really burdensome. We're down to, I think, six full-size copies, and then PDFs. And we're flexible with the scale of the plan, too, as long as it's a workable scale. So, we're looking to just kind of delete that section in its entirety, and make sure that those requirements are detailed on our applications. Other changes to that chapter include another typo error. I think it was supposed to be square feet, and it just says feet. So, we're adding that, the word square in there, and then adding the ashboard of the prohibited list of parkway trees, because we don't want to deal with that again.
Good.
Any questions on those? The fourth amendment is, again, a series of amendments to Chapter 10A, which is tree preservation. Again, we're proposing to just delete the detailed specifications of the size and number of copies for those plans. There's a reference in there to our entranceway signs that refers to the Three Oak Tree city logo. That's no longer our logo, and it won't be on the new gateway signs either, it'll just be the single oak tree. So, we're just eliminating that reference. We're looking to declassify ash trees, and they were classified as Class A or Class B trees that would need to be replaced in kind if they were removed. Obviously, again, we don't, we don't want to replace those. And then finally, we're seeking to clarify that tree preservation plans are not required for developments that are less than an acre and a half in size. That is the way the code reads now, is that it's only required for developments over an acre and a half, but it also says that it's required for all subdivisions and planned unit developments. And recently, we've seen, we've seen subdivisions of PUDs that are less than an acre and a half in size. I don't think that was the intent when the code was written. I've gone through the files, I've even asked my predecessor what he believes the intent was, because he was around when the ordinance was created, and it was really to draw a line at an acreage of an acre and a half. So, we're just looking to make that clarification there.
Any questions on tree preservation? Five?
Okay. The fifth is to allow the use of LED lights in our parking lots. Our ordinance states that lights must be amber-colored and high-pressure sodium. I think the intent of regulating that was to make sure that we had kind of uniform lighting in our corridors, and in our parking lots. We see more and more requests for LED lighting, obviously, because they're more efficient. There are LED lights that kind of have that warmer glow, too. If you limit the Kelvins, or Kelvins to 3,000 or less, you'll have that kind of warmer glow. So, that's what we're recommending, is to both allow the high-pressure sodium and LEDs of 3,000 Kelvins or less.
Any questions? Six?
And then the final, the final one is, again, kind of a typo. Under the freestanding sign regulations, we require that freestanding signs have the address of the property placed on them, and the intent was to have it a minimum of five inches to ensure visibility, but it was put in as maximum. So, we don't want to limit visibility, we just, I want to-
You're referring to A frames here, right?
No, just freestanding, like monument signs.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Any sign that was approved after 2010, I think, should, is supposed to have the address on it, at a minimum of five inches, not a maximum of five inches.
Good. Any questions on six? I think that does it. Thanks for cleaning those up.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on, on item G. Let's read the roll.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, that brings us to new business, item five. Anyone have anything that they'd like to bring before the committee of the whole this evening, as far as Alderman? Anyone from the public would like to address the council? Jean?
Jean Gaines, Geneva Chamber of Commerce, 8 South Third. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank all the city departments for their support and help during Swedish days. It was a really good week, as you know, between police and fire and public works, streets and walks, and electric. They're so helpful, they're just wonderful to work with, and we really appreciate it, and the hundreds of volunteers that come from the community. So, thank you all for a really good week.
Jean, thank you and your team also for your leadership through the Chamber of Commerce. You have quite a legacy here as far as Swedish days. How many Swedish days have you been involved in?
This was 4-0.
4-0.
So, we've seen it grow. I think it's the first time we ever wore a sweater at the parade, which was wonderful. And we only had a little rain on Tuesday, and it was pretty hot on Thursday, but other than that, it was picture-perfect.
Everything I've heard is, it's been one of the best Swedish days ever, and weather has a large part to play with that, but-
I think it shows you, if we have the weather, we have a great product.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any, any other new business from the community? If not, the council has a need to go into a closed session on the purchase, sale, or lease of real property this evening. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Bruno, seconded by Ruby.